Next item.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. We have a number of blue cards tonight. The first one is Mr. Mark Gurlek from Dearborn on boundary proposals.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I have a daughter who is a freshman at Edsel. I have a seventh grader at Stout, and I have a potential sixth grader next year also at Stout. So I prepared just some speaking points. I'd like to start by complimenting Mr. Mustin and Mr. Jaffer for their participation in all the forums. They've been very professional and at times have taken the brunt of criticism. So, thank you. I'd like to thank President Lane, Trustee Barry. They've been at every forum that I've been to. I know Trustee Thorpe has been to several. So it's noted, but it's also noted for the lack of participation also. We see it. The voters see it. A friend of mine emailed Dr. Malako, and the response that was given was that it's not necessarily the Board members' responsibility to go to the forums. The gist basically, you guys are versed on the proposals and the data that's tied to the proposals. Forums are not for the Board, they're for the public to provide input. The email also included the forum schedule wasn't coordinated with the Board, which could be the reason why attendance by some is so weak. I wasn't consulted either, but yet I've made it a point to be at every single forum meeting. These forums have huge impacts on my family, so I make it a point to go to things that are important. It's quite possible that these decisions will not impact you or your families personally. This could be the reason you aren't making them a priority. What's frustrating though is that the fact they do impact the lives of the very people who voted you into your positions of leadership. Showing up just seems like the right thing to do out of respect for those families. Have you guys had time yet to look at the feedback?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because here's what I've gathered in my four forums. Proposal 2 is the most popular, however, there have been suggestions to improve it. Some want new high schools, or at least a ninth grade academy. A new comprehensive proposal was brought forth and submitted, and I know you've had the chance to look at that. Proposals 1 and 3 receive little, if any, support, so I'm wondering if it's possible, not tonight, but in the near future, to strike 1 or both since they're not receiving public support. People want to keep community in the high schools. I've heard it several times now. Becker, fantastic community. With busing being such a huge concern, especially with the prospect of doubling the number of buses to Edsel, that takes away from that idea of community. To be honest, I've heard that it can handle the 22 buses because it's got a big parking lot. I don't want my child's education based on the fact Edsel has a big parking lot. That's not a student-first approach to solving a problem. To be honest, we are a very huge district, we're very diverse, but what I've taken away from the forums is that families all want the best for the students. Mr. Jaffer, Mr. Mustin, and Dr. Malako have all assured us that those in attendance, that the Board wants the same. So we're a team working this. By attending all the forums to date, I've been able to listen to the thoughts and ideas of people I don't typically hear. I want to know what parents from Fortson and Dearborn feel about this. I look forward to hearing what Woodworth families say this coming Friday. What you missed at Lowry, Lori, for those of you that weren't there, parents there are also concerned about the busing. Their kids going to Dearborn High don't have those late-running activity buses that everybody at Edsel, everybody at Stout, the families from Smith are all concerned about. The lack of participation is there. I emailed Dr. Malako about this earlier in the process, and he didn't have a response in terms of how that was going to be addressed. I know he called it, referred to as a hypothetical situation. Being at Lori, it's not hypothetical. Parents are living that right now. So it's not a hypothetical thing. It's something that needs to be thought about. Board members who fail to attend the forums are losing out on the faces and stories behind these concerns.
Sorry?
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
You have to watch the time.
I will. You can look at data and read feedback all you want, but you're not going to understand the complete picture unless you allow yourself to experience it firsthand. I'm not asking you to speak or even participate, I'm simply asking you to be present. I would like to encourage you to attend several of the remaining forums, including the one at OL Smith where two of your proposals shift the population to a brand-new school. I would also like to request that possibly the day that you decide, the meeting date that you decide to share your decision, you hold the Board meeting onsite at Edsel. Because that is the high school that is in the sights for the biggest impact. Give a forum where those who are going to be impacted greatly have the opportunity to fill a room. They will overcrowd this one. I know boundary changes are difficult, I simply ask that you make yourselves present so that we, the families and voters, can trust that you are truly digesting the complete story instead of basing your decision on the numbers and figures that are sitting on the sheet in front of you. You would be doing the entire district a disservice if you whittle this decision down to numbers on a spreadsheet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next. Dennis Healy on boundaries from Dearborn.
That's a hard act to follow on boundaries, so I will keep it short. I'm a lifelong Dearborn resident. I live in the Edsel-Ford boundary. I have grandkids that are going to go to Edsel-Ford. When I saw the numbers and the amount of buses, 20 or 21 buses going to Edsel-Ford in two of the proposals, and only four going to Dearborn High, I thought, man, they're trying to make it like Edsel is a commuter school. I didn't think this was fair for the kids in the Edsel area that are there. And really, as a taxpayer and a homeowner, I felt like, boy, if somebody's going to buy a house in that particular area of West Dearborn and they find out, oh, there's 21 buses coming in, and it's kind of a commuter school, I think it doesn't bode well. People look at schools as one of their top priorities in buying homes, and Dearborn has a good reputation. That's why I've stayed in Dearborn. It's a good community, good school district, good people, and I just want Edsel-Ford to remain, like Mr. Barry said, a neighborhood school as much as it can be. I know there's a large population on the east side, and we have to deal with the high schools we have, but just make it fair for Edsel-Ford and really for Dearborn High. The boundary should be fairly drawn up. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. No, Phila Hyder, Mrs. Sayad, boundary changes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Trustee Lane and Board members and Dr. Malako. It's really hard to follow up the two presentations. Mr. Gurlek said a lot of the things that we had in mind. So Mrs. Sayad and I have attended at least four of the five community forums, and we intend on attending the rest of them. We've made the time in our schedule to attend every single one as much as possible, if not both of us, then one or the other. Yeah. So you've given us the opportunity to hear our concerns, and we're also hearing yours. So over the last five meetings, there was one that I did not attend, but I did watch a video by a person that was representing us, and one of the concerns that we kept hearing is, we need another, we need a fourth option. We want either another high school or we want a ninth grade academy. And although, you know, a fourth high school is frowned upon by the Board, and it was immediately removed from the list of options, and it was at one point marked as unrealistic, the community wants a fourth high school. Whether it's feasible financially or not, that's to be decided. It was also brought to our attention that we have a vacant high school in the city, St. Alphonsus, and it was brought up several times. So we took it upon ourselves, and we paid a visit to St. Alphonsus, and we got a tour today. And the building is really not in as bad of a shape as we know. And, you know, I'm not a professional inspector, but I'm sure that after a professional inspector goes through, they can give us a number of, you know, an amount, a dollar figure of what it would cost to bring this building up to par. And you know what? Sadly, some of the areas in that building were significantly better condition, in better condition than some of the schools that are being used right now. So I would really recommend that we take a serious look at it.
And it will also eliminate busing, which we have a big, big problem. Like I said, I've been talking for 10 years about after-school busing, activity bus for my kids in the area where I live, and I think Ms. Mary, she sees-
You do know that St. Alphonsus has a pending sale?
It does not.
It does not.
I called and checked the archdiocese.
We were there today.
We were there today.
At 5 o'clock. Before we came here, we were there.
And about charter schools, there's two more charter schools that's being looked at in Dearborn, in East Dearborn. And that's something that we don't want, and you guys don't want. We don't want to lose our kids to charter schools.
Yes.
Lot of parents in my area don't know what's going on. They don't know that there's, their kids can attend after-school activity. They don't know anything. And the kids, all you see them, they're playing in the streets until 9 o'clock, and I feel very sad. We need to do something about these kids. And that's why we have ninth grade academy, like if it's St. Alphonsus or anywhere else. All those ninth graders, ninth grade from Fortson can go there, and some of them that go to Dearborn High can go there. That will help a lot, these kids and the parents, and it's easier for us. It's easier for everybody. If we can work hand-in-hand with, we need your help. We don't want to attend all meetings, and at the end, it's your choice, you made the choice, and lots of the parents don't know anything. We need all to work together, and we have to go to every school, elementary, every single school, and tell the parents what's going on. None of them, most of them don't know anything. I talked to them, they said they don't know anything.
Right. Parent involvement is highly encouraged by Dr. Malako and his cabinet member, and we really, really appreciate it. It will suffer with a lot of the options that are, you know, the three options that are on there. Parent involvement will suffer, extracurricular activities will suffer, sports will suffer. We don't want that to happen. We want to work with you if you allow us to work with you. All of the concerns that you, the Board has put out on a new building or, we have an answer for everything, so we're not going to go over that right now because we're limited on time, but we're willing to sit down, we've done our homework, we're both professionals, we're willing to sit down and break it down for you and answer every concern you have the way you've given us the opportunity to voice our concerns. And then in regards to, this is just one point I want to make right now, in regards to our population, our student population decreasing, if that happens, we have the option right now to lease St. Alphonsus with options to buy in 10 years. So we can lease it. We don't have to own it, so we don't have to close a building in 10 years or 15 years when the, you know, if the population decreases. We can just walk away from the lease, and they're willing to work with us, and they're willing to give us a great price. They would rather have Dearborn Schools take that building than a charter school because it's happened before and it wasn't good. I don't want a charter school down the street from my house. I don't want to have to move my house.
I don't want to.
I want a public school. I want my children to be within walking distance of their school, and I want to know that, you know, the entire neighborhood, the entire area is happy with what goes on there. I'm a Realtor. I got a call today from a charter school that wants a property that I have listed so they can build there. I don't want that to happen. I can't say no because I owe agency to my seller, but I don't want that to happen. I want a public school in that building, and I want a public school in every vacant property if that's possible, if we need to do it. So allow us to work with you. We will bring you the answers that you need to get a fourth high school as an option. Allow the people to decide, and we don't expect answers right now.
I recommend you guys go see the school first and put it, fourth, as a fourth option, before we continue with the meetings. And then we can, whatever you decide, we can continue with the meetings because it's a waste of time. I mean, most of the parents don't want all the three options that you guys, okay. And you know what? I have one daughter, I can move anywhere, but there's other parents who cannot move anywhere. And it's very sad. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Walker and Jim Peace, American Legion Youth Programs.
I thank you very much for allowing me to come before you this evening. I will try and keep everything brief.
I always give people a little extra time. Don't worry.
My name is James Pease. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus and a fourth-degree Knight. I'm a member of the American Legion Post 364 in Dearborn, and I'm also a member of the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council and a senior vice commander. I was honored this past Friday to attend the ceremony at Lowry Middle School and watching the young students honor Veterans Day. What a beautiful ceremony, and I thank you for that. And in that spirit, in the spirit of the Memorial Day Parade, our Assembly along with St. Hedwig Cemetery have come together to bring to our community this nationwide program called wreaths across America. This program started in 1992 with 5,000 wreaths being placed in Arlington Cemetery with over 2,000, 200,000 and 26,000 wreaths, 226,000 wreaths placed on graves in 2014. That's how this program has grown. In December each year, at over 1,100 cemeteries, communities come together to remember, honor, and teach that the freedoms we enjoy today are not free. We are reaching out to our schools of our communities to join with us in participating in this ceremony in the Lane of Wreaths. It is our hope to place 500 wreaths this year on the graves of veterans and work to grow annually with over 10,000 veterans interned at St. Hedwig Cemetery. Someday, we hope to reach, to hope each will receive a wreath and her name spoke out loud so they are not forgotten. We look forward to working with our schools and our communities in purchasing wreaths to honor and to place on the graves to build this program for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a little presentation on our youth programs. Pass this out real quick. I promise I won't take up much time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The program I just passed out to is called Boy State Program.
There's also a Girl State Program, and I've got some literature here. I'm going to leave with you guys some extra pieces. And we also have a program, two other programs. One's called American Legion High School Oratorical Scholarship Programs, and there's scholarships tied into all these programs. Another program we have is called the American Legion Department of Michigan, Michigan State Police Program. It's called Student Trooper, and that's a co-ed type program. Some of our programs are for the students 9th through 12th. The Boy State and the Girl State Program is for students that are finishing their 11th grade and going into 12th grade, and the program is run in the summer. The information that you can find on the back of this sheet that I gave you, at the bottom, there's a website for the American Legion Program Department of Michigan, and if you go to that website, you'll see a dropdown that says Programs. All the youth programs and all the scholarships are in that program. Now, what I'm here tonight for is, the last three years, we've been working with Fortson High School very successfully, I like to say, and I want to thank the superintendent monkey and the board trustees for your support directly and indirectly. We've had three students go to Boy State in the last three years, and we haven't had any girls go to Girl State yet, but we've opened up the program at Fortson for one Boy State, one Girl State, one Female Student Trooper, and one Male Student Trooper. And that's a total cost to us about $1,530, and we're willing to do that. But what I'm here to tell you tonight is, we want to offer it to the other five high schools, and with your support and help, I think we can accomplish that. Not only do we want to open it up to the other five high schools, that's six total, I don't live in this community, but I think there's six high schools here. Is that right?
Three, and then we have a couple of special.
Yeah. Okay. So whatever the, there's four programs that we could take to each school, and then oratorical too, but that's a different program. But we don't want to stop at the four for the schools. If we get, the more kids we can get, the better. We'll find the money somehow, but we're committed to help these kids get through these programs, and they're beautiful programs. If you read through the brochure, I'm sure you'll agree with me that the courses they take is about government. They actually set up mock governments, government, they set up a governor, and right down to the dog catcher. They have a great time for a week, and, like, wind it up?
Yep.
We have a good connection here with Mr. Hussein Barry, and he's been very helpful to us too. So any questions, you want to write this number down, you can contact me. My first name is Jim, last name is Walker, and I'm with the American Legion, Fort Dearborn Post 364, like Jim is, on telegraph next to the Pizza Hut there. 248-909-1646. That's my cell phone. Feel free to call me anytime. Any questions? Send the students, we need your help.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
When I first met Mr. Jim Walker, John Ruzlowski introduced me to him. I had no idea what Boy State was. Did my homework, and that was our past presidents. That's part of, past, our past, I mean, current, like CEOs of major companies, governors, leadership in politics and in commercial. So Mr. Jim Walker and Jim Peace, thank you for coming tonight and presenting this. I know, I know we're doing good at Fortson, but the plan is this year to reach out to Dearborn High.
We have a nice template at Fortson. So we know it works, and we just need to open it up to the other schools.
We will be reaching out to Dearborn High and to St. Alphonsus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Aida El-Sagir, Blue Ribbon Award.
The National Blue Ribbon Award is the highest, is considered the highest honor a school, I'm sorry, what's wrong with me? The National Blue Ribbon Award is considered the highest honor a school can achieve for all the hard work during the many years of the school. And I'm here tonight for parents to say thank you, and I really appreciate this outstanding achievement that happened, that happened by the effort of so many current and former staff and couldn't have been happened without the parents' involvement. So basically, it's all, it's, we all had a hand in making Becker a Blue Ribbon School. I'm so proud of our Blue Ribbon children and parents, and tonight I want to personally thank Becker parents for their engagement in children's education and for making Becker a great place. Thank you.
And Mr. Steve Young is last, but not least. He did fill out 10 cards. They were turned in late. I might have had by 10 minutes, but since time is running short, I'm not sure that you'll get to hit every topic.
Yeah, I would suggest you prioritize your topics because you're not going to have 10 opportunities to speak for three minutes. I'm actually giving everybody more than three minutes anyways, but please prioritize.
You guys can limit those, isn't it? Oh, wait. Actually, there is a rule that prevents you from limiting public comment to 30 minutes. Oh, there we go. There actually is a rule that limits your ability to do that, and that would be the Open Meeting Act, which you probably remember from this email attachment.
I have a copy of it. Yeah, I know what it is.
Oh, well. So maybe I can borrow those cards, because I have so many topics. Thank you.
Sure, you can look at your cards.
Yes. We have a lot of topics to talk about.
Well, remember, we're going to limit it. We have other people waiting for presentations, so.
I know. This one's going to be quick. House and Senate bills. You guys started your meeting with that. What's interesting is the gun bill that was referenced. They've actually had Gallup polls on this already. 60% plus of the state does not like the bills. It's still being passed through state legislature. So you can complain to your state legislature all you want, although they already know it's not being supported by Michigan voters. So I think that's worth mentioning. And also, considering that that's the state House and Senate, well, it's nice that you guys are giving your opinion. It is the state House and Senate. Okay. We already covered part of your meeting rules. Would say you can't limit it to less than 30 minutes. However, sorry. As you can tell, not answering my messages for a month produces a lot of issues. Shockingly, I don't. That's amazing. Okay. Well, let's discuss the appointment of Celia Nassiferman, which I believe was one of the other cards too. Are you aware in the Open Meeting Act, and your bylaws exactly what it says, an appointment?
I have a copy of the Open Meetings Act, and I've read the bylaws. Yes, has, has.
Could you read that for me, what it says when there's a vote?
No, Mr. Young. I'm not going to be cross-examined by you. You're speaking, you have the right to speak.
And I'm asking questions. I'm asking for you to read that because I don't have it currently with me, which is kind of weird. But, actually.
Please, get set up for presentation for Becker.
Okay. I'll leave your computer be. Yes. Okay. Well, to make it clear, if somebody abstains from voting, that means that it's a nonexistent vote. Okay? Pretty much to summarize that for you. Non-existent vote. It doesn't mean that if you have three people, that that vote becomes the majority vote. So that being in your bylaws, and that being a Michigan appellate case, which is also in your bylaws, is it reasonable to expect that you didn't know that before you made that decision? Mary Lane?
I'm not going to be answering questions, Mr. Young.
Okay. So you will not be answering questions at a forum for asking questions? Okay. Just wanted to make sure about that. Just wanted to make sure about that. Maybe now would be a good time to mention that. I had a nice phone call today. I decided that you probably wouldn't answer any of my questions, so I figured the FBI might have better luck. And after talking to the field office for a half hour in Detroit, we will see what they come up with. But let's get to some other business for some other people here, since you don't want to answer any questions. Oh, jeez. But it can't be limited.
Please wrap it up.
Wrap it up? We have a lot to talk about still. We've got the How School Sale. That's a fascinating topic. Although I can wait until next month for most of that. But I am curious. You guys sold the building for two point four million, which is what's founding your boundary changes, correct? No responses. Okay. I'll just assume that's right then. And the building next to it sold a couple of years earlier at two point three two five million, which was a smaller lot than the ten-acre How School. So, assuming they were the same size, which they aren't, you're looking at a difference of two point one two percent from two thousand thirteen to two thousand sixteen. And you still have to take into account time value of money, which means that you sold it for less than the other building in equivalent dollars. Does that make sense? When you don't have the capacity for your current students. Okay. No response. These are news articles involving the Fortson incident. What's interesting here, a single high school football player in Dearborn was suspended and removed from the team.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
I asked you to please wrap it up.
Yep.
So, you've gone way over on your time.
Actually, I haven't, considering I filled out ten cards, three minutes each.
You're not going to speak for thirty minutes, Mr. Young. We have, the board has the right to limit times.
Doesn't?
Yes, it does. We will ask you to remove yourself. You can finish up now, or we will suspend the meeting, or I will ask Dr. Ball to escort you out.
Well, as long as you understand that is a violation of the Meeting Act. But I'll ask just like one, two quick questions that are pretty important, and I think the people of Dearborn should definitely have an answer to. How many people were actually suspended? Who took part in that incident? Three people were actually charged. Were three people suspended? Dr. Malaico, you're superintendent.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not prepared to make any comments on that situation. My statements are out there on the blogs.
Okay, so you are not denying that one person was suspended?
Mr. Young.
I just...
Ask your other question, and then we're going to finish your commentary.
Okay. You guys familiar with anonymous? No. I would assume not. Okay, well, they actually published the name of the student who was responsible for that incident?
That's, this is a violation of federal Education Privacy Act.
But we're not, no, I didn't actually publish the article.
We don't want you to give the location of where it is.
And I'm not going to give the name.
So please take a seat now, Mr. Young. You've had more than enough time. I asked you to prioritize, so please yield the microphone.
Would you be shocked to learn that this is not the first incident at Fortson? And I believe it at that. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I guess we don't care what happened to Fortson.
Next item, unbelievable.
Approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Dearborn Board of Education meeting, Policy Committee meeting, October ninth, twenty seventeen. Regular P-12 meeting, October ninth, twenty seventeen. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Did anyone have any changes that they want to make to the meeting minutes? Can I attach a unanimous roll call?
Yes.
Or unanimous affirmation of the minutes? Yes, it looks like there's no dissent. So, thank you very much. Okay, next item.
Special reports. National Blue Ribbon, Becker Elementary.
All right. We continue. Ms. Hassan will come up with Ms. Maxud, and I believe they might have a student here. Awesome. And again, they, they kept us, kept me very busy last week, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Lane, Dr. Malaico, trusted board members?
I have with me Ms. Maxud, third grade teacher at Becker, and I have our fifth grade student Fatimi Hamoud here. So, I know we shared our presentation with you, I'm going to move this over for a little So we're really excited to be awarded this national award. And as you saw from the excitement from before, there are a few things that have been put in place that we would like to highlight for you tonight. So what makes Becker a Blue Ribbon School? As you notice with everyone that was here earlier, from the staff, the parents, and students, it's the high expectations that we have. Every student is encouraged to go above and beyond, and that starts in our classroom, and it also starts with the first teachers, our parents. It's very evident. We focus on data, but not a data where it's all about the numbers, but how we can interpret that data in our classrooms, and how we can ensure that all of our students are successful. We focus on engaging our parents, and to be an integral part of our everyday fabric. There, I mean, just today, our PTA had a wonderful bagel sale, just in the morning, just, you know, everybody come in a little bit earlier. So you see all these great things happening. Obviously, our dedicated staff, this wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for our dedicated staff. We focus on our students. It's always about the students, students first, student centered. It's always from the student perspective, and our great, and our teachers do a great job doing that. I'm vested parents and community members, all state holders. Parents from previous years will always, I'm a Becker Bearcat for life, and it's really nice to see, it's a great community. And of course, the supportive district initiatives that we have embedded into our everyday classroom lessons. We have a few powerful practices that we're really proud of, and I'm not going to go on too long, I know it's in front of you there. But, like mentioned before, our strong parental involvement speaks volumes. And we had our PTA president come up here earlier, talking about, you know, from the behalf of the parents, what they do day in and day out. They encourage our students at home, but also our teachers, and it's really evident. So we're really, we're really proud of them, and we're happy that they're always there to support us. We have great math workshop models in our classrooms. We demonstrate great oral language developments across all content areas. We're all about small group instruction, because we know when the teachers are able to really capture those students in a small group, and kind of get to them, hit on them one-on-one at times, that is very powerful, and this is something that all of our teachers practice. And we focus on writing a lot. Writing happens in kindergarten. I welcome all of you to come. Just walk through our hallways and you'll see it. Kindergarten, kids are writing sentences, and they're not just copy off of the board, but these are students' sentences that they come up with. So again, our doors are welcome to any of you. If you want to just pop in, having a bad day, come into our kindergarten first grade. I mean, it'll change, it'll change your life. Yeah, we'll have coffee. We'll make coffee. And Amira, who's our office manager, makes the best tea, everybody swears by it. Climate and culture. We know that any school has to have an essence, and that's climate and culture. There has to be a presence. And it's a culture of achievement. It's a culture that is focused on having a shared vision and mission. It's a focus that's really about the voices of our students. And it's a collaborative initiative between parents, students, and teachers. So we have Fatimi Hamoud here, who's a little nervous, right? Okay, she's part of our student advisory. She's a fifth grader, like I mentioned before. And she would like to talk to you a little bit about what it means to be a Blue Ribbon School, but also what makes us this, from a student perspective, because it's always all about the students and how they see things. So, Fatimi. It's like you're talking to me, right?
At Becker School, Mrs. Hassan, the teacher, staff, and parents all motivate us to succeed. They really believe in us and gave us the confidence to succeed in not only in the present, but for the future as well. As a student advisor, it is a difficult job, but a very rewarding job. We are role models to the other kids at school. Our actions influence the other students. There are many, there are many obstacles, such as preparing events and scenarios that are educational and fun. For example, Mrs. Hassan, the teacher, is in the student advisory team, collaborated and put together an anti-bullying skit about the negative effects of roasting and bullying. It is a fun way to educate the kids about this topic, and that type of behavior would not be tolerated at school. So as you can see, the students, well-being, well-being and success is a priority at Becker School. Thanks to the hard-working and dedication of Mrs. Hassan, our teacher, staff, parents, and students, Becker has earned the honor of being awarded a Blue Ribbon School. Proud to be a Bearcat. Thank you.
All right. Great job.
She was a little nervous, but I must, I must say, Fatimi, among five other students, are part of the student advisory, and they put together an anti-bullying initiative at her school. They presented to almost three hundred students and staff members. So, I mean, they, she wrote a skit, right, and acted it out, all about roasting, because all the kids think it's kind of funny, but it's not, right, when it hurts people's feelings? So Fatimi and her team did a great job, so, good job, guys. Okay? See, you did it. Okay.
Yeah. Good.
Another thing that is very powerful, and I know Ms. Maxud will talk about this later, is the instructional leadership by our teachers. Teachers are all leaders, and this is something that we believe in our inner school, but it's also modeled in our school. Our teachers and support staff really have the growth mindset, where it's not, this is how it's always been, kind of approach. It's not fixed, there's always willing for, you know, they're willing to improve, or really learn new things, and this is what makes Becker so unique. We also focus on, like we mentioned before, the high expectations, but also personalizing it through the My Learning Plan. But students are not necessarily just come up with goals, but they're constantly going back and forth, and this really, really sets the tone in. And we're also pushing for, even at the elementary, to looking at not just middle school and high school, but beyond that, because if we, we set that foundation, that will carry with them, and we're really proud of, proud of them, putting forth these goals, but also being problem solvers, to some extent, solving if there, if there's a barrier, or if there's a time where, you know, it's challenging for me, how do I overcome that? And our teachers provide our students with those strategies on how to overcome. And so therefore, we've created a culture of trust. And this is something I want to focus on, and I'll try not to take too long. But the reason why I say culture of trust is, so for example, if Ms. Maxud has this, let's say there's a challenge in her class, she can go over to her grade mate and say, you know, I'm struggling with, you know, such and such. What are you doing differently? And that culture of trust is something that we've embedded here in Dearborn Public Schools, and it's resonated in our, in our classrooms, and it's very powerful. When we're willing to learn from one another, and kind of put our ego at the door, that's very powerful. So this is, this is something that we're, we're very proud of at Becker. Parental involvement, as we've mentioned several times, but we can't say it enough, it is a shared goal. Parents are involved, they make, you know, they have fun activities for our students. Sometimes, you know, they provide opportunities for our students that, you know, sometimes, you know, budgetary concerns, we can't, we can't deal with it. The PTA is always there to help us out, they help us with family nights. But we also, our teachers provide parent workshop, and that's every grade level does it at least twice, twice within a semester, where they invite parents to come into the class, you know, to the classroom, or if we have it in a larger setting, where they're working alongside their child, and we're providing them with strategies so they can take home and implement at the home. So it's very powerful as well. And we have parent talk classes, we have a great turnout for our monthly parent meetings. So we're really excited about all the parental involvement that we have. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Maxud to talk about our Washington DC trip. We were busy, like Dr. Malaico did mention. It was a great time.
Good evening, President Lane, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Malaico, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to share with you an amazing experience that I had, the complete privilege of sharing with Dr. Malaico and our principal, Mrs. Hassan. Again, my name is Patricia Maxud, and I teach third grade at Iris Becker Elementary. Last week, Dr. Malaico, Mrs. Hassan, and I attended the National Blue Ribbon Award Ceremony in Washington, DC. In addition to this wonderful experience, Dr. Malaico arranged a meeting on Capitol Hill with Representative Debbie Dingell, Senator Debbie Stabinow, and Senator Gary Peters, to advocate for our public schools' teachers, and to discuss teacher shortage. It was encouraging to know that they were well aware of our concerns, insufficient salaries, and the discrepancies that existed between the available support and performance expectations. After our visit with Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, her staff secretary, Ms. Ricky Miller, accompanied us on a VIP-guided tour, which included the House Gallery in Capitol Hill. And this is where Mrs. Hassan was walking fast, with the heels and me, and Dr. Malaico didn't know whether to keep up with me or her. So, thank you, Dr. Malaico, for this wonderful opportunity and experience that I am sure we will cherish for years to come. But the highlight of this trip, of course, was receiving the Blue Ribbon Award, and the ceremony presentation, presentation itself. But one might ask, as Ms. Lane asked, what was our special sauce? So what made Iris Becker a Blue Ribbon School? Although the answer lies in its dedicated staff, exceptional students, and parents, however, Becker is truly about its talented exemplary and effective teachers, past and present, who have contributed to garnering this unique and coveted status. So allow me to be selfish a little bit. So what does it mean, and what does it take to be an effective teacher? The answer is very simple. It's called love mixed with compassion, enthusiasm, and a strong desire to create an extraordinary teaching, learning, and nurturing environment. Effective teachers provide experiences that create long-term valuable memories. They inspire, demand, and expect their students to reach their highest potentials. Effective teachers play many roles in our approachable, not only by their students, but by the staff and parents as well. These teachers possess great listening skills, and take time out of their already extremely busy day to lend a hand or offer a shoulder to cry on. For many students, our classrooms become the only safe haven, and our voice is many times the only one that can advocate for their silent screams. Effective teachers create a sense of community and belonging in their classrooms, where every student plays an integral part in shaping his or her future. It is the place where students share ideas, express opinions, and dare to dream. Effective teachers are enthusiastic about their own learning. When educators love their job, they can't help but be enthusiastic about it, which in turn inspires their students to enjoy their own learning as well. It is highly contagious. Effective teachers are flexible with their planning and continuously individualize their instructions, because one size does not fit all. Finally, effective teachers are team players and skilled leaders. They are the only ones who provide our future generation the opportunity to become successful leaders. As Aristotle, an ancient Greek philosopher, once said, "Those who educate children well are more to be honored than they who produce them." For these only gave them life, though those the art of living well. Teachers impact kids' view and help shape them, as well as elevate them to be the best they can be. All in all, to create an independent and successful generation, we need to teach the whole child. Teaching is not only about gathering scores and data, or what we display on our classroom walls, but about the social and emotional aspect also. Although effective teachers play a main role in shaping our kids' future, likewise, parents are the cornerstone of any successful school or community. At Iris Becker, the innovative entire- At Iris Becker, the innovative and tireless PTA has established a solid platform and supportive network that was certainly instrumental in achieving our Blue Ribbon status. Sorry, no offense to anyone, but our PTA is the best. So, I hope what I have shared with you today has given you some insight regarding what it takes to be an effective teacher and what catapulted Iris Becker School into gaining the distinct honor of being a Blue Ribbon School. For our exemplary staff, the amazing and dedicated leaders, Mrs. Hassan, also Mrs. Nadaf Awani, and Mr. Higgins, students, parents, and stakeholders, past and present, who have wholeheartedly served Becker and placed our school and students first. Congratulations to you all. And remember, a Becker Bearcat will always be a Becker Bearcat.
Well said.
Thank you.
Adroitly put.
It was ten pages. I just got it down.
Thank you, and yes, we will have great memories from that trip, and I cherish the time.
It was amazing. Thank you, Dr. Malaico.
It was a wonderful honor. Thank you. I just wish we could have brought the whole school community with us, you know, to share in it.
I know. I know. They brought quite a few people.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? You guys were tired today?
You covered a lot.
I know, I know. Thanks. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.